Sorry, I was trying to give people time. It seemed like it was going to be a little slow, but I'm sure, like always, they'll come in at the last minute, but that's okay. First of all, I just wanted to thank everyone that did show up, to come out and discuss problems that they may have with the village, or the government of the village, or anything that pertains to the betterment of the village, you know, to discuss it, as always. The ones that are here, I appreciate you guys coming, you already know the rules. We try, we do not become personal, and we try to keep the argument down to a minimum, but we do discuss, and we do ask questions, and that's what this is for. As you know, next Tuesday is the budget, and I was hoping that more people would come out, because next Tuesday, we actually vote on the budget. Whatever's, whatever you saw, it hasn't changed. Only thing that changed the last time were the numbers on the page and the headings. I think they were put into, I have an original one, and it was just that the pages weren't numbered. So, but all the numbers, all the figures, all the different appropriations, revenues and expenditures stayed the same. So, next week, the village trustees... They had phones on. Oh, okay. The, I'm sorry, the, I don't know, I don't know if you could say this is the last chance to ask questions, but basically it is, the last chance to ask questions about budget items, because the trustees will be voting on this come Tuesday, and that's virtually what it is. I was a little shocked at how it happened yesterday. It's the first time since I've been a trustee that the audience wasn't allowed participation on all the items, not just one item, or have a time limit. But, that's what happened yesterday. They were, the audience wasn't allowed to ask questions. They were given a three-minute time limit, and with 14 pages, three minutes is not enough to ask. So, you know, it was told that they should put it in writing, but who's going to sit there and write 14 times 2, because I'm sure you're not going to just write a one sentence, times 2 pages for budget items? And then when someone gets it, they have to write a rebuttal, so that's back and forth. That's not going to happen. I did something similar to that last year, went down item by item and asked, but as I got to the second page, it got kind of ridiculous, and I just, I shut it down, but the mayor kept going, so, but it didn't change anything. It's, it's dependent upon, just like anything else, it's dependent upon the vote of the trustees. That's why I said it's very important that you at least do research on who you put in those seats, because they have the right to write policy for your village, the right to spend your money, to have appropriations, to have resolutions and ordinances that affect your life, or affect your, yeah, I guess you can say your life in the village. So, like I stated, I was hoping that more people would come, but it is what it is, and we're going to still move forward and ask, or answer, try to have a dialogue, try to inform the ones that are here what's going on in the village, and if you have any questions about means, you know, that's what we're here for, to ask questions, to make statements, to find out what it is that you made, something that may be important to you. And also, if you have any problems, as far as in the village, as far as in any other services that you're talking about, maybe because I will get back with public works, I will get back with the police department, I will get back with any entity that you feel that you tried to talk to, and you didn't get an answer. So, without further ado, I don't know who wants to be first? Okay.
Last thing I'm talking about on the budget, that he's got his budget terms out there for the first time in how many years? He mentioned having a surplus for the first time in how many years? And my main question is, there's a lot of past due bills that are on the AG report, and I know that was mentioned at board meetings before, and supposedly somehow it's included in this year's budget, but as a trustee, have you seen where those bills that are due, are going to get paid in that budget? In this year's budget?
Where did you see, or who told you that there was a line item to pay back last year? I have the budget right here.
There isn't.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm saying, that, have you seen that? Because I have it, I saw it online.
There's nothing in this budget that states AG report bills, past, I'm sorry, bills that haven't been paid to be paid. It states what we're going to actually do from 2016, 2017, that what we're going to, what we're going to spend, or what that particular line item, or that particular department is going to spend.
Right.
There's nothing in there that says, even AG report, that we're going to put $100,000 toward AG, no.
So, those bills will still be due in addition to what's in the budget for this year?
Yeah. Basically, what you're going to be doing, when you pay, the AG report is paid off. I want to say as money comes in, but then again, as money comes in, that's what you're going to fund your budget for that year, that particular fiscal year. Unless you have something as a line item that says, by such and such a date, we budgeted X amount of money, when that comes in, or whatever, then we'll pay that, or those particular bills off. Right now, it's basically, we pay them after, we get the taxes. Everything is paid, we get taxes twice a year. If after we pay all the bills that we need to pay, then they may throw something in there for the AG report. However, and what's been past practice here, is when you build up that money, and you have an AG report that's $500,000, because you owe the lawyers or whoever, then we take that money and pay the lawyers off, or pay whatever particular bill that we need to pay. But you forgot, they forgot that that money, even though it's extra, it's not extra, it comes in, that still has to pay part of the budget that you budgeted for that year. That's why you have to set aside money for the pay the AG report, you have to have a line item for that, because it may look like we got extra money, that money is accounted for, because if it wasn't, we wouldn't have an AG report.
So, and then, I just want to bring up, I looked online, the agenda from last night, where it says, you know, each resident can talk for three minutes, okay? I pulled up the agenda from the 2015-16 hearing, and it was completely different. There was no time limit on there. I did not look at 14, 13 and all that, but for 15 to 16, there was no time limit for any resident, you could talk as long as you want. And it's like, is he afraid, is the mayor afraid of people are going to ask questions? I mean, I'm just asking, and I'm not putting you on the spot, but in my opinion, that's what it appears to be.
Okay. By definition of a word, hearing, means that it's a discussion between parties. This being the discussion between the residents and the administration. We have hearings all the time. We have hearings with Robinson Engineering about different appropriations. This hearing was the first time, as I stated before, I stated yesterday, in the 10 and a half years I've been a trustee, that you had a time limit on answers about your money. This is your money. This is how it's going to be spent. This is what it was appropriated. This is what the powers that be came up with, to spend your money. To not take questions and let people ask questions about, because someone, somewhere had to sit back and say, okay, let me look at this, let me, let me, someone, somewhere researched that, and that's why they came up with the question, but not to, to not allow them to talk. That was totally my estimation, not anyone else, this is just my interpretation. They should have been allowed to. They've been allowed to every year but this one. And when I heard that, I was taken back too, because then why have a hearing? It's not a hearing. It wouldn't be a hearing. It's not a hearing if you cannot engage back and forth over a subject that is near and dear to you, which is your money, how it's being spent. If that was the case, if that was the case in all the communities, then you would, you wouldn't have a hearing. You would just, this is what we're going to spend, let's vote on it. The state right now doesn't have a budget. Why? Because they can't come together with it. It doesn't have the votes to make it pass, so therefore, there's no budget. So, who suffers? Really, the people, the taxpayers suffer. Now, I understand that they're talking about taking away the legislators' pay until they come up with a budget, but it's not unusual to argue back and forth over the money. I am not, I'm sorry, me, myself, I'm not going to just give my money to someone, and you go spend it, and that's it. Here, here it is. Spend it how you want to spend it, even though I may disagree, I'm not going to say anything, because I put you there, whatever the case may be, and move on.
I have one more question. How much money is left in the water fund? Do you have any idea? Because that seems to be where they're going to go.
Water fund goes up and down. You got to understand, we appropriated last year, and it's in here, $300,000 for the water fund, which in other words, that was appropriated, that we would actually, they would actually, because water fund is an enterprise. We make money. So, you've actually appropriated to take $300,000 out just for things in the village, administrative costs, not anything, just basically like we get it from the TIF, the TIF districts, we get an administrative fee for that. So, the same way. Anything after that is strictly supposed to be done for water and sewer projects only, well, quite naturally, some, some, but not all of your wages for water and sewer come out of that. In other words, they, they're doing other things, that's why you have public works, you have parks, I'm sorry, you have buildings, and that money goes to pay for public works too, for the personnel, buildings and grounds, grounds is your parks, buildings, are your buildings. That doesn't come out of water fund. That's budgeted out of our regular budget, has its own line item. But, it's better to borrow money from your own fund, which is public, I'm sorry, which is the water fund, than to go to the bank, because quite naturally, the banks will charge you interest. But, we should pay a decent, not as much as we pay back to the bank, but some interest, back to the water fund in a timely manner, because all villages borrow from there, but you, the thing is, you don't, it does not become part of your day-to-day operations, borrowing money from, from that, because what happens if we have a catastrophe, and they need $200,000 to $300,000 to do something in public, in public works, in water and sewer?
You just said rural, to be a favor, like last month.
Okay. So, that's what I'm saying. So, if we don't have that option, if that's taken away, if we don't have any, and there's no money left, and then what are you going to do? Go out and get another loan, which, you know, it, it doesn't make sense, so. But no, that's, that's some of the practices that I like to see change, especially when it comes to the money, because you can only, you, you reason why, just like we have a savings account, or checking, well, checking is different, but a savings account, you put some aside in case you need it. But if you delete that, what are you going to do? So, yeah.
We are so far in debt. I'm wondering how far down can we go before all of a sudden, we are bankrupt, and somebody comes in and takes over this village?
You become bankrupt when you can no longer pay your bills, and you don't have enough income coming in. Reason I'm saying that, you always will be able to pay your bills, but you may not want to hear the alternative. And the alternative is, you don't have the money, what do you do? You tax the people. So, as far as, they'll, you won't get to the part bankruptcy, until you get rid of a lot of different things, and a lot of that is your, your bills are your services. So, if we ever get to that point, we won't have a police department, and you won't have a fire department, and you probably may not have public works, I don't know. But your police department will be picked up by the, by the county, so that means you have co-conan police officers here. However, you're not going to save a lot, but all the money that you, you just, you give them an appropriation, they'll come in and look at your books, and see how much money you don't have, or whatever, and they'll take from that, just like when you do anything else, when you file bankruptcy, I won't say bankruptcy, something else that you can file, and they tell you just how much they'll give you. If you get a garnishment on your check, or if you owe the government, you make arrangements. Same thing here. They're not trying to take over your village as a bankrupt, we're not big enough, but they will bring your services down. You'll have minimum staffing, and that, that would be the first two things that they try to do, unless your police department is corrupt. If it's corrupt, then they'll take it over right away, but if it's not, they'll go down to minimum staffing, because you don't have enough money. Or you can do the other alternative and raise taxes. So, it's going to be, it'd be hard to bankrupt your town, because you have places that you can mortgage. See, there's no mortgage on this building, it's a bond. So, it can make you mortgage it, and then pay payments, and take that money and pay off other bills. But what can really mess up your village is if you have too many bonds, because bonds are guaranteed money. By that, in the essence of just having a bond, you agree as the, a village, your administration regularly, agrees to pay this. If you don't have the money to pay this bond, then you must levy the residents to pay whatever that payment is. That's guaranteed. You don't have to do that. The bond people will. It happened to us twice already, where they came and they levied for whatever that amount was for each resident. Now, next year, if you can pay that bond payment, they don't do that. But when it gets, they're not going to come out there and try to give, you know, we'll give you an extension, no. We, we will levy, in other words, the bond, the bond people will levy the village for their payment, and that's what you agree on when you take a bond. That's why you got to watch that you don't get to a point where you have too many bonds out there that you can't pay back, because they don't get their money.
I have, I did take a copy of the financial, of the budget online, and I work for a financial institution, so I scheduled a meeting today for about two hours, and I had the bank's auditors to go through line by line. I will tell you when we get home what they said, and what's your time limit on that budget as it is written today. So, I would say, Mr. Burgess, and any trustee that is listening, I wouldn't argue with our mayor about what he has put together. I would let him do business as usual. He says it's fine, the people that vote with him says it's fine, his supporters says it's fine. However, in 2009, when Louis Towers was sitting in that chair, David was the biggest opposer of Louis Towers about what he was trying to do. Why are you taking money from the village water fund to pay bills? That's illegal. You shouldn't be able to do that. And yet, since 2012, that's all he's been doing, is taking the money from the water fund. So, I know, and when you get home this evening, you will know what the bank's auditors said about that budget that was put together. So, I know, and you will know, and I will share it with anybody else that would like to know. When you work with professionals, and you have a 45, $50 billion company, and their auditors take two hours to sit down and explain to you, circle, highlight, and say, what kindergarten put this together? We got a problem. So, I don't need you to get stressed, I don't need you to argue, and when they want to vote on it, let them vote on it. It is what it is. We, as a village or residents, have the option, sell it and get out fast, or you stay and fight. Fight what? I, I have no idea. So, that's, that's the lot of our lives for the next five to 10 years, I would say. If you bought not, if you didn't buy another gallon of gas for your police cars, it's going to take you five to 10 years to get from under where you are today. Okay?
Okay, as of last night with the budget hearing, I too have my paperwork from the last budget hearing, and it was, as you said, totally different. My question is, there has to be some guidelines, some type of ruling as to how you run a hearing versus a meeting. And combining the two does not make it correct, and I think it was wrong, but I, I don't know, because I don't know what the right way is. Three minutes, I'm not astute when it comes to math, I hate it, but I had multiple questions that I could not, not the 14 pages that the other lady, who is very astute, she was unable to ask her questions, and then I did not ask all of my questions, because I was running out of time, and I didn't even come close to what she might have been asking for 14 pages. But one of the questions I have, on that aging report, was the aging report on the budget at the last budget? If I'm not mistaken?
No.
Okay. So, it's never on the budget, which to me, somebody that's not happy with math, it seems stupid to me that you owe people, or companies, or whoever, all this money, and you're not putting it on your budget. And why weren't they paid last time? Because it wasn't on the budget to pay them. Oh, and we're not putting them on this budget? Oh, when the hell are we going to pay them?
You kicking the can down the street, like I said before. You keep kicking that can, kicking that can, hopefully somebody, somebody else will pick it up and run with it, but in the meantime, as long as it's not in front of you, you keep kicking it down the road, sooner or later, just like people do when they get, I see people get bills and throw it to the shelf. Soon or later, somebody's got to pay that bill, and if you don't, you're going to reap the, you know, the benefits, but you're going, you're going to end up wondering how you got behind the eight ball. Why do you think these places out here that have bankruptcy stay in business? That's how they stay in business. So, but they're running this village in that same direction, and this never has had any appropriations for money that's owed. The last question someone asked the mayor about that, he said, well, that was appropriated last year, but last year's money is gone. So now, what are you going to pay what you owe now with? And then why aren't you going to add more money, or more liability to the budget than that you'd had last year? Last year, you weren't able to pay your budget, you weren't able to pay everything. So this year, what are you going to do? You're going to go out and hire more people, and you're going to get yourself in more debt. But the revenue is not going to be that much more, because one thing that they refuse to understand, last year, just for an example, we had five, about 4,000 homes that were occupied, that were paying taxes. This year, we lost 500 of them. So, how in the world are we going to get the same amount of revenue we got last year with less people this year? Only way you can do that is what I stated before, you stay there and raise your taxes.
Also, on, one of the questions that I wanted to ask was that some time ago, it was very, very urgent, very urgent, that we get rid of our dispatch service. It was urgent. It was not anything that was on the budget. We were going to save mega bucks by getting rid of our dispatchers. So, they voted their way, they got what they wanted, and we were going to make money. I argued before it was done, that this state-of-the-art equipment that was still being built would not be conducive to what we have here in order to keep in touch with each other. I was told I didn't know what I was talking about. I was told it only takes a minor adjustment, and the two would be compatible. Well, shortly after the dirty deed was done, and all that money was absconded with, our computers and their computers are not compatible, we had to come up with another $300,000 for computers and software. Then they did that, and that wasn't on the budget either. Now, as of right now, I don't care what the mayor, the chief, or anybody else says, I am telling you, right now, those computers are not functioning at 100%. They are not compatible, and I want to know, is there anything on this budget to fix that?
Maintenance, but that was, I mean, there's maintenance on every item.
Computers are not working.
Well, there's nothing, there's not a line item that states computer maintenance. It just says maintenance for the department.
If our police officers lose their radios, we don't have anything, because those computers are not doing enough, they're not fully functioning.
Okay.
Okay. Now, that's, that again, is another thing that's going to be voted on after the budget's been passed, and they're going to say, we have to have it, and they're going to vote yes for that too, which is not on the budget. But I couldn't ask that question, because only three minutes. Another thing that I did ask about, and this is a thorn in my side, and if people are tired of hearing about it, too damn bad, because I'm not going to give it up. You heard the mayor last night when I told him, he's known as many years as I have, that that police department is full of mold, and as of January of this year, they identified asbestos in there. And I'm concerned to a deep level, because we have three employees from over there. Two lost their lives to cancer, the third one is still fighting the battle. Now, my husband was in that building from the time it was built until he retired. My husband had lung cancer, and how do I know I didn't get it from that black mold? And as a registered nurse, I'm telling you, I don't give a damn what they tell you, black mold is dead. Black mold is deadly. It's deadly. But they haven't even identified if it is black mold or not. And he's known that mold is in there since he was a police cadet, meaning when he was in high school. And he's got grown kids now. But don't worry about it, you know. Who the hell cares? They took money out and put it in the budget for Parks and Recreation to get their asbestos taken care of. I commend them for that. But to not even get things started as to exactly what is it over there? It's not just the black mold anymore that you hear about. You have no trouble seeing it. You can see it. You go downstairs where we went for meetings and things, black mold on the walls. Estima down there. Police and fire commissioners have a room down there. There's mold all over down there. Is it black mold? I could show you pictures of patients with black mold that would scare the hell out of you. And they eventually died. But we don't care. It, it's, it's okay. Let's spend seven thousand dollars on some fireworks. Instead of getting a professional, and I'm talking about a real professional. I'm not talking about our water department, or whatever else you want to name that. I, I think professionals need to be in there and identify exactly what it is, and what are the steps that we need to take to correct this problem. And yet, I'm told that Kevin Weller is going to investigate it and check it out. Kevin Weller is no more of a professional as far as mold and identifying it and doing the other things than my dog is. And I'm not putting him down. He's a very nice person. But he is not qualified for what they need to do to identify the problem and then find out what are the steps to correct that problem before we have more deaths. Or maybe that's the reasoning for getting rid of our police department. They're not in the building. How can they get anything? But I'm not going to let it go. I definitely am not going to let it go. And I would even encourage the lady that is still fighting the cancer. I would suggest she find a, a legal person to help her with the possibility that she got her cancer from the black mold over there, if it is black mold. But it surely would make them step up their cause, wouldn't it? But I, I'm sorry, I'm not putting down our kids. And as I said, I commend them for taking care of the parks and wrecks. But he made me feel like he was saying, you know, the kids are there every day. Yes, they are. But you lock that room, and you try to appease everybody that it was safe for the kids to be in there, because that asbestos is now covered, and the room is locked, nobody can get in it. But you're doing absolutely nothing for the police department. Meaning, you don't give a damn if somebody's going to die. And it makes me angry, and I'm not going to give it up. And I don't care what he does or what he says. I was talking before him. I will talk after him. If there's a problem, and I see it, and you can't give me the right answers, if I'm wrong, I'll apologize. I will publicly apologize. But until that time, you're not going to get me off of this. We've lost lives, and I feel there's a possibility that that mold and asbestos is reasoning behind some of the problems. And I think it is an emergency state that they identify it. That's it with me.
Okay.
I want to hit somebody. I want to hit somebody.
I have a report here from T F, TRF Company, and they do have a cost for removal and abatement of the community center, which comes to around fifty-five hundred dollars. Fifty-five hundred dollars for the community center. And for the police department, it's thirty-nine hundred and seventy dollars for removal of what they found.
Asbestos?
Yes.
But not the mold?
No. It doesn't say anything about mold.
How much for the police department?
Fifty-five eighty. I'm sorry, police department, I'm sorry. Police department was thirty-nine seventy for the police department, and fifty-five eighty for the community center. So you're talking about nine thousand.
And we're spending seven, oh, yeah, on fireworks.
That's, that's American. That's American.
So are the lives.
Oh, okay. So this is the report here. If anybody wants to see that.
We should put their office over there. Down the basement.
So, yep, this is, this is the community center and the police station. So, anyone else? Oh, wow, great. I like that. Okay.
Last night, oh, sorry. Last night it brought up that crime is down fifty-eight percent, and, you know, this and the other, and I'm thinking, I'm not quite sure how that can be.
What do you mean? I mean, don't. Numbers, just like anything else, can be altered or made to what you want them to say. Just like all the straw poles and everything else, until you actually see it. You have to, you live out here, you have to look and see, what do you feel? Do you feel safer since someone has been in office, which that's what they try to portray? Do you feel that it's safer now in South Village than the last six months that it's ever been? Because numbers can mean anything. I can come out there and say, "Crime is down a hundred percent." And it probably, I'll probably be right for ten minutes. But it's, it's what's your perception. You're a resident. Do you feel safer? You don't care about the numbers. Do you feel that you can actually walk out your house and stand out there on the street and feel that you won't be accosted, or you won't be someone will come up and try to do something? Do you feel that's safe? That's what it matters.
I won't go to Fairway after dark.
Well, I'm just saying, that's what matters. Numbers are numbers. I can sit here and quote numbers all day long. It's how the perception of the people. But I'm going to say this, until people come out and complain about what they feel is there, with the way that they feel about what's going on in this village, until they come out, get fed up with what is actually going on in this village, I can say anything, I can regurgitate anything I want to say at that table. Who's going to dispute it? But until you, and this is, this is a shame, because this happens most of the time, until something happens to you, everything's fine. But soon as it happens to you, now you all haven't done anything. How come you won't take care of this? It's preventive. You come out and get involved in your community. You have to come to the meeting, get involved in your community. What stops crime? You do, not the police. I had a talk today with a police officer about that same thing about crime. And, and I told him, "You cannot be anywhere." He agreed. If the residents come out and stop, because they know what's going on, and they walk over there and say, "Hey, we're not going to have this," and call the police, they'll go somewhere else.
Well, they can't really call the police and expect them to be there right away, because you got the mayor having two police officers coming in off the street, because there's a resident at the podium that wants to ask questions.
That's not crime. That's just...
I know, but the two officers that have come up here are now off the street.
That was something that we, as an administration, talked about this. I don't know if you guys that were at the meeting remember this, but the trustees talked about it, that in case this does happen, that you have a disgruntled resident up at the podium, and you felt they were causing trouble. What was said? They said that we would adjourn the meeting.
For five minutes.
For a few minutes.
And then come back.
And calm it down and come back. That didn't happen yesterday.
No.
That didn't happen. That's what they, that was agreed upon, even the mayor. We, we had a meeting on that. Even the mayor agreed, "Okay, we'll do that." That didn't happen yesterday. It was basically given.
Right.
How do you feel in the town that if you express yourself and, and say something about your money, how it's being spent, that you're going to be banished from a meeting and escorted out? Basically, by force, you know, push the person. What kind of, what type of community is that? How do you, how, how do you want people to come up and ask questions if they feel that if they ask questions, they're going to be attacked? And if they're not attacked here at this podium, they're going to be attacked out there in the street? We had a meeting last week, and the police were called, because some resident felt that they were in a handicap spot. Come to find out, the two cars that were in the handicap spot had placards, had handicap placards.
Imagine that, so.
So my question is, who, who is using the police officers for their own edification? You should do your homework, but instead of all other things, you called the police because a car was at the village hall in the handicap spot? Hmm, I didn't think President Obama was here, and they needed that spot. But why would you call at nine o'clock at night? To have somebody come off the street, drive through here, and then to find out that it was, that it was, it was, it didn't make sense, because they did have the handicap stick.
Those cars were legitimately parked there.
I, I didn't, that's what I'm saying.
And again, you pull an officer off the street.
That's what I'm saying. They, they, but, but, they came. And then the person that did the calling would came past and went past the seat to make sure the police officer came. So, but that right there is an abuse, because, but the officer had to respond because of dispatch. We don't have dispatch here. Dispatches that was in Calcom made their call. They don't know what's going on. They dispatched. But had we had our own, then it might have been a different story. But that's excessive. That doesn't make sense. But that happened. We have better fish to fry. If you want to talk about crime, it takes two to make it. You, as a resident homeowner, property owner, you live out here. Get out there with your neighbors and, and, and try to form some type of organization. So, so you can at least monitor your, your street. Neighborhood watch? I'm going to tell you right now, if they come over to where I live at, I'm calling the police, because it's called neighborhood watch, not village watch. Village watch are the police officers. The police officers can come down, fine, they have badges, they, but if a person doesn't live in my neighborhood, and you out there walking and looking, I'm calling the police, saying, "I don't know who you are, because you may be someone trying to case my house." So I don't know, I don't know your background, at least, but the police officers, I kind of know that they're out there protecting, because they are sworn in to protect. So that's just my comment. That's just the way I feel. And if I live anywhere in the neighborhood, if I don't know who you are out there patrolling my area, and you don't have a uniform on, you say, "Oh, I'm part of neighborhood watch. I want, I want, I'm just looking to make sure..." Looking at what? Looking, looking at what? To see how vulnerable my situation may be, and who you can talk to? Until they get total screening, fingerprinted, and everything else, you're not going to come up and down my block where I live at and start looking around, because I'm going to call the police and find out, "Why are you here, and you live on the other side of the village?" But no, that's, 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 that's what I'm talking about. We have to, the community has to come together in order to stop crime. You can't sit in your house, call the police, close the blinds, and hope somebody else take care of it. You know, I'm kind of opposed to junior neighborhood watch, because I don't think young adults, youth, should be out here snitching on another person. That's cause, that, that, that's looking for a fight. I'm not going to have my child out there saying, "Well, you know, they're out there doing this." And then they find out that my child is the one that pointed the finger. Now you think what's going to happen? When, when I'm not around, or when they go outside and play? We have to, we have to be more productive. We have to look at what it is you want this community to do, and then do that. Put this back and forth, call the police on those that I don't like, cause their problems, and then the other ones just turn their head and keep on going. We can't do that. And if we have, and we're going to be a community like that, you can have a thousand police officers. It's not going to stop crime until the people that live here understand this, come to the administration and say, "This is what we're going to do." Have this room filled with people that want to get involved to stop crime. Police officers by themselves cannot stop crime.
And last night, it was also brought up about the businesses that are looking at Saw Trail, and, and I'm thinking to myself, "Okay, really?" Because last that I drove over by Fairway, there's a lot of open storefronts. Last I drove down Saw Trail, Levels, that is no more. The Wise Guys is no more. You got open storefronts over by Villa de Pizza. Got open storefronts down by where Subway and that was. You got, I mean, it's like, so how can, and I'm not saying you, but how can the mayor sit up there and say, or make it seem that you're making progress, or he's making progress? And the way he talked, I thought he was going to hurt himself, patting himself on the back. Seriously. It's like, and he always says, you know, "Come talk to me after the meeting." My question is, why does a resident have to go talk to the mayor after the meeting? Due to the fact that if you're open, honest, and transparent, wouldn't you want that on the record that you answer the questions? Wouldn't you want to answer the questions in an open forum?
Well, let me, let me go back to your first question as far as, you know, trying to make, you know, what people perceive about the businesses. It's just like they asked a question, it was asked about crime being down, and I said, "Those numbers are hypothetical." Same thing with businesses. You can sit there and say, "I'm trying to get anything in here." And that may be true. But reality dictates what type of business that you're going to get here in the village. All they have to do is make that left turn on three ninety-four, coming east, going towards Indiana. Passing, first thing you see is a old, dilapidated, used car lot. Then across from that, you see a field that needs to be cut. Grass needs to be cut. Some of those things that are in there need to be taken down. I'd rather see a field that's mowed nicely than something that looks like it's, hasn't been kept up. That tells you where your pride is in your village. And until you take care of that, you're not going to get, you're going to get the businesses that come in fly by night, to here and get your money if there's too much problems. Because if you turn in here and you look at this village, you can tell that you have a security problem. Who's going to open up a business? They got to have, they got to pay a security guard to stand right there. They got to stay there and make sure that you're not, you know, someone's not coming in there trying to rip them off. That's an expense they're going to have right away. Then they're going to look at the other businesses. First question they're going to ask, "Do you have a chamber of commerce?" Nope. "Do you have an economic development committee where we can talk to sometimes?" So when I bring my business out here, guess what? You're going to come to me, because it has happened, and ask me for donation, for this donation, for that. Every month is always something that you want them to do, but you want them to make some money out here in the village. You want them to come out here, but that's what they come out here for, is to make money. But if you constantly knock on their door, asking them for, for this, for that, for this, for that, sooner or later, they're going to be gone. Then the next thing you have to do is get on these facades, these owners that own these different facades. Not the business owners, but the ones that own the building, and make them clean their act up. Make it all, you go to communities, you see how all the sides are the same in a, on the particular venue? That's done on purpose, so it can look like something. That's done on purpose, so it can look like something. But if you don't have anything in writing stating that your facade should look this way, we can all look different. Now there's no uniformity. Now you're gonna ask a multimillion dollar business to come out here and do business with you. Basically a chain. And they know how they're supposed to look because they're in other communities. Walgreens are in other communities. Jewel in other communities. Um, Ultra Foods in other communities. They know what those restrictions are. So they come out here and no one approaches them for the other than a sign ordinance. Because they haven't even fixed up the parking lot in Fairway. And that particular person got a class eight, um, tax break for the next 20 years. I asked, when, when are you gonna give us? At least fix it up where people would want to come out and shop. But you come outside the door, it's darker than it was. It's, it's dark as heck out there and people don't see that. People don't, people don't, you know, they're not gonna, you're not gonna shop there. And you step outside, you can't see outside. You can't even see your car.
Okay, sorry.
You don't mind if I finish this? Go, go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mary.
So, a while back, Windpack did an expansion. Or is doing an expansion, correct?
Yes.
You got, the trustees voted to approve that?
There was no vote for that. I mean, cause we, okay, I was on one subject, but I go to the Windpack. There is, there was nothing, Windpack when it first came out here, the plans for that was back in 2000. I want to say six or five. That's why you see it called Mark College Drive. The plans for Windpack along with the other companies that came out, started back then. Windpack just didn't get their act together until 2009. Cause they still have a place over here at South Chicago Heights, down South Trail. So they finally decided, okay, let's, let's go over here. But that land was already set for them to come over here. They stated at that time in 2009 that when this one gets up and running and is profitable for them, main thing, profitable for them, that they were considered opening up another warehouses, which they just did, broke ground for, um, sometime later. Um, they, that was put on back then with those people. I was on that committee, well, I was part of that committee, economic development at that time. And we, we, you know, it was talked about with downtown, talking about, um, both of the expansions. And, uh, this is what they wanted to do. I don't know if anyone knows, but Windpack has a sweet deal in the village. That's why they're here. Anybody's gonna be anywhere, they're gonna make some money. They're in a TIF, which means they don't pay to your schools. They don't pay to your library, they don't pay any other taxing body. Their money that they pay, they pay property tax. Cause the government makes them pay property tax. But when you pay property tax, your money's allocated in different taxing bodies when you pay for your house. But this one goes to a TIF district. And what they do with that money there is they make sure, that's why it was never been, as I stated before, about bonds. That money goes and pays for the bonds for that we had to, to, to get, to get in order to pay for the streets. We had to float a bond as a village to pay for the infrastructure on the, on the, on the streets. To pay them back, to pay the developer back. They put the infrastructure in per our instructions. They put the streets in, they put the water in, they put the sewer in, and all that. And when it came time for them to finish and open up a business, they gave us a deal. Only way we could pay that bill is through a bond. But we put it back on them, since they're making the money that they paid out of their taxes. They pay that bond bill each and every year. So that's a bill we don't have to pay. Okay, that's good. Then we take a fee for administrative costs. And that administrative cost includes your fire, wa, um, water, well, I'm sorry, public works, fire and police that come out and patrol. Okay? After all those bills are paid, money goes back to them that's left. That's a sweet deal. That's the only reason why they came out here. They don't get it twisted, don't get it, that, oh, well, you just, they came out here because that TIF was written that way. We got a business to come out. We get maybe some jobs. We get notoriety. We get people coming on their coattails and say, okay, well, you got, um, this business out here. You notice if you've been over there to where it's located, it looks nice. Looks great, cause they keep that up. But that's part of South Village too. But that money that's there is used for that. That money cannot be used for nothing else. You can't borrow from it. You can't mess around and pay your, uh, bills with it. That's a separate entity by itself, and that's the way they want it. So yes, that was a good win-win for them.
So, I, the question I wanted to ask about that when I saw it in the Southland Voice paper?
Oh, you wanted to know why?
Yeah, I just wondered why the mayor was there.
Why the mayor? The village administrator, the village, um, what is it? Mohan, village financial director. And I think one other person from the office came. Well, I asked the mayor, why wasn't the admitted board of trustees there? Every single groundbreaking that I know of, that I've been a part of, we've gone to. Whoever was trustee at the time, we've gone to every single groundbreaking that there was. Why this happened this way? He told me that Windpack was supposed to inform us. But they didn't inform us. He knew they didn't inform us. Why did he give us a call? I don't know. I thought it was a travesty. This is your board. They had a luncheon. But you thought to have non-elected officials there. You the only elected official that was there. The other people that were there were non-elected. So therefore, them being elected officials, part of this community, part of the community, putting them in office, didn't matter to you. It didn't matter to you. So, that's, that's why, that's why that happened. It happened, that's it. I, I was through with it. I was, I just asked a question.
Are you done?
Okay.
I, I think you should have added that, um, the mayor said that he learned about it late, et cetera, et cetera. But I've been in the village hall numerous times on different days, different times. And I've never seen Mohan in a complete suit. So, they came to the village hall that day, prepared to go to that. So, that to me was a lie.
But when did you hear, I'm sorry Judy, but when did you hear him say that he heard about this late?
And then when you asked the question, he puttered around indicating that it was a last minute thing?
No, he, he said that he got an invitation. And he said that, and I asked him, why did we get one? He said, I don't know, you need to ask Windpack. But he never said that he got an invitation at the last minute. He never said that he got the invitation. I, you know, I, I knew that he, um, cause I asked Mr. Fairman, what, you know, were you told? He said, yes, that's why he wore a suit that day.
Maybe, maybe, um, he got the invitation for himself as mayor and the trustees and decided to take them instead of you guys.
That would be, that would be what I would think. There was not one elected official on that picture for a business coming into this village to be represented by a trustee who was voted in. The mayor came and that's it. Everybody else is an employee. So, we're not part, or not good enough to be part of something that's happening. But then you want to put a diatribe out there in the paper of how this happened, what you're gonna do? I'm not gonna get back and forth with, I'm not gonna go back and forth with what the mayor said because I'm through with that and half of it is over with. But to put something out there, to have this already ready, two days after this, um, groundbreaking lets me know that you knew about this a long time ago, to get this put together and put out there, and you didn't even think to have your trustees present to be there and to be part of something that's, that, that impacts our village.
I had something else that I wanted to say as far as last night's meeting, and I don't know if anybody else caught it. When they called for a police officer to remove the resident, um, started out physically. Um, I don't understand if we had a police chief right here in the building, in this room. Why did it, why did he have to go out in the hall and get on his radio and call a police officer in off the street? He's a cop. The chief is a cop. Why couldn't he deal with it? He didn't assist the officer. He stood by and watched, and it took one man to walk her out the door.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm not gonna give my personal opinion. I, I kind of know why, but this time I'm gonna let that alone. I'll let you guys figure out why it happened that way. Because all you have to do is look to see who escorted her out. And I'll leave it alone for that reason. Because he could have, he could have, you're right. He could have asked her to, or the mayor, as I stated before, could have asked for a recess. That's what, that's what we talked about.
And I'm not putting the chief down. I don't know him well enough to put him down. Um, but it doesn't make sense to me. You had Tim Oliva sitting over here, and they had a problem. They made Tim get out of his chair and handle it.
Like I stated before, I'm not going to, because I have my own interpretation and that's my interpretation. So for me to say that I don't want someone getting out there talking about, well, you know, he, he wants to say this, he wants to say that. All I can say is use your brain, see who escorted her out, why it happened that way, then you'll understand.
You had two residents who had an issue with that meeting. The first resident voiced her opinion and demanded some answers. And the chief got her away from the podium. Talked to her and got her away from the podium. The second one had issues also and was somewhat louder than the first one. But it took a police officer to come in and handle the situation. Does not make sense to me. I wonder what they'd feel like if they got home and their house had been burglarized while the officer was in here instead of on the street?
Yeah, that's, that makes sense.
Also.
Uh-oh.
Talking about the, um, parking lot over there by, um, sharks and all those. I like sharks. I will not go to sharks, like right now. I will not go there after sundown. It is too dark in that area. I have been to board meeting after board meeting after board meeting, saying you gave this guy a break prior to giving him that tax break. We asked to have him brought here and tell us what he was gonna do to, to make the village better for that tax break he's gonna get for 20 years. And the mayor didn't see fit to do that. And now the parking lot is full of potholes still. And the lighting has never been fixed. I don't care what they tell you. You go over there and see. I, I won't do it. I won't do it. Unless I got a gun in my hand, I'm not going in that parking lot after dark. And, and nobody seems, oh, it's not that bad, ah, you know. Yeah, I don't see your wife and kids over there. And I think that giving that tax break, and it was argued upon and argued upon, but then they gave it anyway. So here we are, sitting with a dump. Brought in a new business that looks out their window at a dump. Looks like the ghetto. The parking lot's a mess, the other storefronts are a mess. That landlord over there is a slum landlord. And I would tell him that if he was sitting right here. I've been in his buildings, I've seen what he does, I've seen what he doesn't do. I've seen where he won't fix a furnace, where he won't fix the air conditioning, where he won't fix the ceiling leaking. The roof is leaking. I've seen all that. And yet he needs a tax break. And they gave it to him. And I think it's a disgrace. You know what's sad is if you come in here, and I, I was really, I came in here for a reason. And, and I had to wait in line, which was not a problem. And there was a lady and her water bill, she got a shut off notice. So she came in here and she tried to talk with them. And I, I have to tell you, they were okay. They talked to her nicely. But you could pay so much of the bill right now, and then you could pay the other part of it later. But you're still gonna pay a late fee on what you pay today, plus what you pay later, plus at the time you pay that later, your other bill is due. That's due too. It, it, it to me was like, it's not workable. You know what I mean? They weren't helping this person. Yet this man is a slum. And they're giving him anything he wants. And he's not a villager. He's not paying taxes to us.
Well Judy, first of all, yes, he is now.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I made that statement. I admitted it without, I knew that he does pay taxes.
Yeah, because he's not a TIF anymore. He used to be TIF one, but they dissolved that. I personally tried to get him to continue. He, for some reason, thought that if they discontinued the TIF, that he would get the money that's left in the TIF fund. And I tried to tell him, you could use the money that's in the TIF fund to enhance your business because it's within the TIF. And I told him, you can get better lighting. You can get your, um, your, uh, parking lot repaid. Not just put some paint over it or whatever and make it look good. You can actually get it done. And he chose to let that TIF expire. So when that TIF expired, all that money that was left in there, guess where it went? To all the taxing bodies that he didn't pay. So David, David was sitting up here giving people checks, taking pictures, showing the big checks and everything, thinking that he's giving that money away. He was not giving that money away. That money was there that they put in there. And when you dissolve a TIF, it goes to the TIF, um, to the, to the different taxing bodies according to what percentage that they did. So quite naturally, who got the most? School district. This one got the most. Who got the least? Mosquito bait. How much did the villagers get? The same, 20%. So whatever it was, it was 20% of that. So it was not something that he was gonna, then he got upset because it went that way and I tried to tell him. But someone else was telling him, no, go ahead and do it that way. I just want to make a couple of, uh, observations right quick before we, before we, um, get a chance to adjourn or leave. Um, and I, I don't know if you guys got copies. Um, but I do have a copy. And if you could have came up or can still come up to the village hall before next week and kind of look. But just the police department alone. And this is something I have been saying, and I did not say it through the time we had the meetings because no matter what I say, it's gonna be mis-screwed as whatever. But last year, 2015, 16, on the police department overtime, this is just one item. On the police department overtime, last year, we actually budgeted, I'm sorry, it was budgeted for $160,000 for overtime for the whole year of 15, 16. 14, 15, it was budgeted for 200. 15, 16, it went down to 160, $160,000. This year, overtime proposed is $106,000. Now, let's take a rocket scientist, a child in second grade can tell you. Now, let's take a rocket scientist, a child in second grade can tell you that if last year, you actually spent, and this is what it is, two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and that's as of last year, I'm sorry, this year, fifteen, sixteen, budget cycle stops at the end of May. We've already spent three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in overtime on the same line item. So you're gonna cut two thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars, and I guess you're gonna think it's gonna get wiped away. That right there is a, a plan to fail. If you spent three hundred and sixteen thousand this particular budget year, which ends in the thirtieth of this month, how do you think you're gonna cut two hundred thousand dollars of overtime off that budget?
Shame on you. Shame on you. If the crime rate can drop fifty-seven percent, man, that budget can drop all that money you're talking about.
So if you. You cannot cut. If last year you spent ten thousand dollars on a particular item that is controlled by your village, but you budgeted five thousand dollars instead of the ten thousand, you budgeted five thousand. You went over last year. How many years are you gonna continue to keep going over until it gets to your head that you can't cut something that keeps rising? Not, you don't take two hundred thousand, no one cuts seventy-five percent of their budget, nobody. How do you? No, you have to have common sense to see that that's not gonna happen, it's not gonna happen. So, that, that's one of the few things that I wanted to tell you about, um, you know, we have revenue that's comes in, every village does. We also have grant money that comes to the village. And then we have, well, CDBG is grant money, it's community block grant funding. And we get that based on need and income. CDBG money, I don't know if I told everyone this before, pardon me? Okay, well, I must often tell it again. It's, it's money that you get from the government to depressed areas in your village to help you as a village, help you as a village maintain those areas. And it only goes to those areas. Motor vehicle, motor vehicle tax, that's your MFT money. Motor fuel, I'm not sorry, motor fuel tax that you pay at the, at the, at the gas station. We get that constantly every two months from the village. I'm sorry, from the state. Unless something happens and they're not giving the money, but it just still comes to you. It's a lot. That's supposed to take care of the streets other than CDBG money. If you, uh, CDBG only applies to areas that are, as I stated before, depressed areas. If you get the CDBG money, then you could go and fix those streets up. Last year, guess what, we didn't get it down. It was budgeted for four hundred thousand dollars. So we didn't get it down, guess what happened then? Budgeted is four hundred thousand dollars in the hole. Cause you added that money to your revenue for your final budget. You added that in there. So right away, you're four hundred thousand dollars in the hole, without even saying anything, you're four hundred thousand dollars in the hole. So what did we do this year? We didn't get nothing last year. So what did we do this year? We budgeted for four hundred thousand dollars, saying that they owe us. Really? They don't owe you, that money, that CDBG money is determined upon legislation down in Springfield. Those are one of the first things they cut. If they don't have the money, they're not gonna cut wages, thankfully, they're not cutting people's wages. But they will cut this money because it's not promised. It's something that they give you, that they give each area, try to help the depressed areas in the village. We have several depressed areas in our village that fall under that criteria. We have several. And that's what that, that's what you get, and the, and the thing that I have a problem I have with it, is that's the only time we get those streets fixed, is when that CDBG money comes in. I had a different idea to do it, I was trying to start up a fifty-fifty program in the village. I tried to do this eleven, ten years ago. You know, everybody says, we don't have money to throw into that pot, but you got money to shoot fireworks. We have not, except for one year, we have not had, we've had fireworks, except there was only one year that we had it. All of a sudden, it went from this, this particular fiscal year, it went from raise the money for the fireworks to it's American that we're gonna have fireworks. Well, we, we, we're trying, we're trying to look good on a big budget. We're trying to, you know, champagne taste on a big budget, yes, and then. That could be.
Then, you know, you can, you're, you're out within a minute, you're tired, your three minutes are up. But if it's one of them, they talk and talk and talk more than three minutes. Right, so he's unfair, but I hope that people get out and see what he's actually doing. Like last night, when he was talking about how he's gonna hire all these new people and stuff, but he can't pay the people that are working now. But he's trying to tell the village that he's hiring this, and he's doing like the lady back there said about, um, all these businesses, and he's doing all that. But I hope people are really out there seeing and watching what he's really doing and what he's like. And come next time, election time, he's gonna see what it's like. Cause this is just way too much. And I, 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 in real, playing the residents, and I don't have this on. Half the time, I don't want to talk to him, he lies, you can tell when he's lying, he starts to turn all red. And I just sit there, lying, you tell he's lying. So just watch, next time, he's gonna be, you know, he's lying. He's lying.
Yes. They gave money twice, one, money to Parks and Recs, twelve thousand, I think it was, to do the fields. And then the second time, they gave a scholarship. It's still in there.
Right, you suggested, did you not, uh, take use some of that money and use it for, and you were in for a fifty-fifty program?
Yes. Now, now, this year, they gave a vehicle. They gave the village a vehicle. As a matter of fact, it's parked outside there, it's a SUV, white SUV, they gave that. That was one of their trucks that was kinda left off or whatever, but they gave them that. You have, you, you have to.
Something.
You have to invest. When you have a home, or you have something that's yours, if you don't do anything, soon later it's gonna, it's gonna crumble. Just like your car, you can't drive it forever. You have to reinvest it, and if you don't reinvest, the long run it's gonna cost you more. Now you gotta get a new car, you gotta get a new house. But if you do PM, that's planned maintenance on anything, then you can at least keep it up and at least try to stretch it out a little bit longer. We have a lot of problems here, but we're not gonna solve them without getting the village residents involved. Let them know what you're spending your money on, it's what secret is it? You're gonna find out anyway, it's public record. So anyway, I'd like to, first, last, last, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. And as I stated before, next Tuesday, you're gonna be voting. Well, the board will be voting on your, on your budget. I know it's not balanced, you guys here know it's not balanced, but it comes down to votes. We can sit here, I, I did it before two times, and I said I would not do it again. You can sit here and talk about what's wrong, but in the end, it all comes down to the elected officials. So, you guys, thanks very much.